To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. additions or deletions? Kristen?
This is Kristen. Bob Marleano has requested to be added, and I've suggested that we add him under pre-requested appearances so that he doesn't have to wait until his report section. And then additionally, Julie might be able to confirm this. I think there were some questions, and we needed some confirmation about retirement plan stuff. Some things came up, and she had said that that might be required in an executive session. But when I was looking at reasons for executive session, I'm not, depending on what it entails, we might have to go into executive session for that. Or when we get to Julie's memo, I think we can discuss. It has to do with an employee. So it would be to discuss employee, like finance, personal employee information.
Okay, how do you go to executive session? Can you shot people off?
So I'm thinking that what we'll be able to do is, at this point, seeing as, you know, if Bob exits the meeting after, you know, he has finished his, and then what we can do is break to go into executive session, and then folks can request to join the meeting again, and they can stay in the waiting room. There's a waiting room feature, and then I can admit them back in once we come out of executive session.
Okay. So introduction those present. We have Bob Marleano, Kristen Powers, Chuck, Whedon, John Malcolm at Cleveland, Frank, Julie Mack, there's an iPhone, and Bob Jones.
Does the individual with an iPhone wish to identify yourself for the purpose of the minutes?
Yes, not. Okay.
Would have to identify itself if it wants to speak.
Yes, yep. Yep. So for you, for the individual listening, if you wish to add anything to the meeting tonight, we just ask that you identify before coming on to talk. Thank you.
Okay, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting? Everything looked in order. What about you guys? Do you see anything that?
I told, this is John, I told Kristen, I thought she did a great job. It was a very busy meeting with a lot going on. And I thought the minutes were excellent.
Okay, so that sounds like a motion to approve the minutes. Who do we have who are second?
I'll second.
Ed seconded it? All right, is there any more discussion? On favor, Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Great job, Kristen. Thank you. Bob Marleano, you're up.
One other, sorry to interrupt. This is Kristen. We did have Rich Hewlett again was on the pre-requested. I just, I don't know, maybe he is the iPhone, or Bob, do you know if Rich is planning to attend tonight?
I'm not sure that he is. He was going to have his wife put a letter together, and I think he was going to submit that to the board. I haven't heard anything else on it.
Okay, so I'll remove that for tonight and look out for a message. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple of things to go over. First, I'll go over the health officer part, and I also have something on emergency management. There was a law passed about a year and a, I think it's about a year and a half ago now, 18 VSA 603. And this is a law that allows the health officer to find, essentially fine people for violations of the health code, the rental housing code, I should say. A second, I'll share the screen with you for a second. Can you allow screen sharing? I can't, your sound is off.
Sorry, this is Kristen. In order to do that, Bob, I have to make you the host of the meeting.
Oh.
So I'm going to go ahead and do that now, and then when you're done, you can just get it back to me.
All right.
Okay, you should be able to go ahead.
Okay. So this is the law. Hold on a second. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to admit somebody here who's in the waiting room.
Thank you.
It's just a telephone number, so I don't know who it is. But so this law, this is the, again, VS, 18 VSA 603. And the beginning part of this is about writing inspection reports and so on, which is something I do, or I do anyway routinely. But if you come down to here, it says, B1, a local health officer may impose a civil penalty of not more than $200 per day for each violation. That is not corrected by the date provided in the written inspection report. It goes on to say in 2A, if cumulative amount of penalties imposed is $800 or less, the health officer, Department of Health, or state's attorney may bring a civil enforcement action. If it goes above 800, down here, it says that the health officer, Department of Health, or state's attorney may commence an action in the civil division of the Superior Court for the county. That's just, I just bring that up just to explain to you where the authority comes to apply this penalty. What we need is a local procedure, and I wrote up a local procedure, and it has to be adopted by the select board. Now you should be able to see this procedure. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a very simple procedure, nothing very difficult or complicated. It says, per 18 VSA 603, the health officer may impose a civil penalty of up to $200 per day for each violation that is not corrected by the date provided in a written inspection report. The wording is taken right out of the law, actually. Following is the procedure for the town of Polat, health officer. An inspection of the rental property is made by the health officer. A written inspection report shall be made and provided to the landlord and any tenants affected by the violation. The health officer may impose a civil penalty of up to $200 per day for each violation that is not corrected by the date provided. And then the last point is all other provisions of 18 VSA will be utilized as appropriate. So essentially, our simple procedure follows pretty much what the law, how the law was written. But we were told that, the health officers were told that you need to get, you need to have the select board adopt the procedure and the willingness to have a civil penalty for health code violations. And don't forget, just to make sure you all understand, this is only for rental housing code violations, not other violations that the health officer may get involved with. This is only rental, the law only applies to rental housing code. So with that, any questions?
I have a question, Bob. Somehow my screen didn't change to the one that you wrote.
Oh, hold on a second. I'll put it up again. Can you see it?
Okay, here it is. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
While that's up there, does anyone have any questions?
Bob, this is John. Does it include lead paint, or is that a separate situation?
No, actually, that's included because the lead paint is rental housing code inspection. Okay. Good question, though. It also includes pretty much what the fire marshal does, although whenever I have an issue, I usually do an inspection along with the fire marshal. And interestingly enough, the fire marshal technically can find somebody, but they, essentially, they don't. So this gives the health officers, the reason they passed the law was because health officers didn't have any teeth to, you know, they, the state gave health officers the role of enforcing the health code, and then didn't give it any teeth. So they finally got around to passing the law about, as I say, about a year and a half ago. And we have to, had to come up with a procedure. I had to get a, an officer number and a book of tickets. I don't expect, by the way, to be writing very many tickets, if at all. One way or another, usually, I usually get some kind, I usually get compliance one way or another, but this is something to have in the back pocket.
Okay. I'm good with that, Bob. Thank you. Everybody else, okay?
Is this, this is Frank. I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Frank.
How is rental defined? Is Airbnb included in that, for example?
No, there's some, some, there's a lot of discussion about that, about Airbnbs. But the last I heard was that that's not really considered a rental. But I think at some point in time, they may include that as a rental. But right now, my understanding is Airbnbs are not part of the rental housing code.
Okay, thank you.
The rental housing code is meant for people that are living there full-time, all the time, not transient, like hotels or Airbnbs.
Okay.
So what are you, this is Chuck, Bob. What are you requesting of us as a select board? You want us to just make a motion to accept your town of Polat health officer procedure?
Yeah, that's correct. And that automatically would mean that, you know, you all agree that we, you know, if we, if the health officer had to, the health officer can impose this civil penalty. So yeah, I'm just asking for the procedure for a civil penalty to be accepted by the board.
Okay, that, that a motion from you, Chuck?
That certainly is.
Okay, excellent. Does anyone want to second that motion?
John will second that, but I have a question, too, after.
Okay.
Sure.
Go ahead, ask your question, please.
The penalty goes to the landlord, not the, not the renter, I assume.
Well, that's a good, very good question, John. Under most, 99% of the situations, it would go against the landlord. There are some situations where it could go against the tenant, but that would be highly unusual. This is primarily for landlords, to go against the landlord, to get the landlord to comply with the rental housing code.
Okay. Does the town get the mon?
Sorry?
Does the town get the money?
You know, I asked that question, and they were very hazy about it. Let me ask you this. Does the town get any of the money when there's a speeding ticket written?
Not on a state road.
How about on a local road?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, this would, this would fall into more or less like a
Julie says yes.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think the town gets any of the money. It goes to the state.
Of course not. Okay. Is there any more discussion? We have a motion made and seconded. All right, let's vote. John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, Kristen. Thank you for that, Bob.
Yep. Okay, one other, just, this is just informational purposes, but I just, we talked about, or I talked about this sometime last year, I think. But just be aware, I don't know what the status right now is of the mobile home on 140, on 153 in West Polat, the one that's up for non-payment of tax. But I think come October, the town's going to be, talk about landlords, the town may be a landlord. Property, and people are living in that. So that, it's going to become a complicated issue if the town becomes a landlord for that piece of property, that property. My only, this is just a suggestion, and I don't, you know, you all can think about it. My suggestion would be, of course, I think it would be, it would be helpful for the town to have the people vacate that, that building. I'm not sure that building is, in fact, I'm pretty sure that building is not in very good order. My suggestion is that someone speak to the town attorney, Merrill Bent, and see if, what could be done, maybe nothing can be done until the actual transfer. But perhaps a letter to the resident saying, you know, what the town's intentions are, and maybe they'll move. I think evictions are on hold right now in the state of Vermont, so that's going to be an issue. But anyway.
Could you condemn it?
Say it again?
Do you think you could condemn it? And then they would have to leave, right?
No, I don't have the ability to condemn. The only time I can condemn a property is during a, an emergency that's a declared emergency by the governor. So if there was a big flooding event, and a house was half destroyed, then I could, and there is a declared emergency by the, by the governor, then I could go in and I could condemn. But other than that, I can't. The, what you could do is, if they're still there, when you, when the town becomes the landlord, you could, you could ask for a rental housing code inspection, and I could go in there and see what the situation is in the building. But I already know, just, you hear that there's probably a violation of the safety code, which is, I think the people that are in there now, it looks, it appears from the exterior that they put in a wood burning stove, which is not allowed in that type of structure. So that kind of, those kind of things would have to come out, and the town would, the town would, would have to put in smoke detectors, CO detectors, and perhaps fix up other, other things in there. It could end up being costly.
This is Chuck.
Just something to think about.
Can I speak for a moment?
Go ahead, Chuck.
I would ask a question of Julie, if she has the address of the original owner of that mobile home before we took it for taxes. I think that's the person that needs to be contacted by our attorney. And then, when that has been done, our attorney could send a letter, hopefully, by the first week in September, because it's my understanding, and if they're there on the first of October, they can't be evicted, even though, who knows if they pay any rent to the, to the guy that owned it when we took it for a tax sale. Do we know, Julie, the address of that individual?
I have an address, but they never respond to any letters that they have been sent. And I don't know that it's going to do any good to send another one to them, because I think that we're just going to own it on October 3rd.
Okay. The conversation?
Guess what the board, what we need to do is that, depending if those tenants get mail, they need to get a certified letter by our town attorney that informs them they need to be gone from the property.
Well, this is what she told me when I talked to her a few months ago. She said that unfortunately, until the moment that we take ownership of the property, there's really nothing that the town can do.
My, can, can the town write him, write the tenant a letter saying, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing you can legally do to move, but let them know what the intention of the town is? Maybe they'll move on their own. It's a long shot, but.
Right. I guess I'll talk to her about that tomorrow. I'll send her an email and try and, try and determine what we can do in advance of ownership, if we can let them know that in the event that the town, that the town does assume ownership of the trailer, that they will be evicted immediately, or whatever.
Well, she'll tell you, I think she'll tell you what, what you can write, but I think it might be, might be worse. Sorry. Um, that's all I had for
This is Frank with a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The moratorium on evictions, does that extend to the town taking over a piece of property?
It extends, the way I understand it, Frank, the way I understand it, evictions, any eviction ends up going through the judicial system. And my understanding is, any evictions are on hold in the state of Vermont. Doesn't make any difference to the landlord.
Because of COVID?
Right.
So maybe you might want to talk to a lawyer about taking possession of a property with, with a tenant on it at the current time, to see if, because you don't want to take possession of the property and have this COVID protection extend to that realm as well. That's all I'm just saying, is a lawyer might want to be involved.
That's, that's
I'll find that information out tomorrow. Julie, do you know what the day is? John, you, you had it a little bit earlier.
It's October 3rd is the anniversary.
Okay. I'll find all this information out tomorrow. I'll shoot her an email and see what I can gather for information.
Okay, so Chuck, again, the, do we know if that mobile home has electricity at this time? Or can we contact Central Vermont?
I believe it does have electricity.
Okay, so on the 3rd of October, it gets turned off?
No, you can't, can't do that.
Can't do that.
That's not allowed.
Okay, well, I'll get the ball rolling harder tomorrow, so we'll see where we can go with this.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, I'm going to move to emergency management, if I may?
Yes, you may, please. Thank you.
So emergency manager, we continue to write a daily COVID report on our Facebook page, just keeping people up to date on what's going on in the state and in our county. We were given 370 masks from the Vermont Emergency Management, and we're distributing those throughout the town. I'm looking for ways and where, places to distribute them. Some, as you know, I put my email address up on two or three places, and I did get calls from a few people, and they received their masks. I'll be distributing masks with the meals, the group, the church group that's sending meals out. We're going to, I'm going to give them some masks as they can, the next time, this week, when they send their meals, when people come pick up their meals, they'll get a package of the masks as well. But yeah, again, just, if you know anyone who needs a mask, please let me know. There's five in a packet. I'm just giving anyone the whole packet. COVID-19 grants, I'm glad Julie's on. I have a couple of things, Julie. There's grants available to pay for some COVID-19 costs. One is the FEMA Public Assistance Grant. This is a FEMA, FEMA Public Assistance Grant has been around a long time. This isn't just for COVID, but whenever there's a disaster, there's usually a FEMA grant, public assistance grant. The FEMA Public Assistance Grant, though, requires expenditures, expenditures to amount to over $3,300. I'm not sure, I have a question for Julie, what our total costs are, but the last I remember, they weren't quite over $3,300 of eligible expenses. But there's a new, a new grant available, I guess I'll call it a grant. There was an Act 137 passed by the Vermont Legislature, which is funded by the federal government. It's the local government expense reimbursement. I attended a webinar the other day on applying for that, and we have to do that fairly quickly. It has to be in by September 1st. It's fairly easy. And if we're not going for the public assistance grant, let me share my screen again here. This is what the grant is called, Local Government Expense Reimbursement. Whoops. Sorry about that. I know. It's available for local governments, sorry, the deadline to apply, I thought, is September 1st, September 4th. I'll go to, quickly to what you can, what's eligible. So here's eligible expenses. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
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 Okay, so necessary expenditures incurred due to a public health emergency, could hazard pay, supplies and equipment, which is, I think, where most of our costs would have come from, supplies and equipment, sanitation, any kind of cleaning, facility alterations, if we made any alterations, like putting up barriers and so on, overtime compensation. The overtime compensation has to be related strictly to COVID. Redirection of staff, any other COVID expenses not covered by other funding sources.
What, question for you?
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
Would the security system we're putting in in the town hall qualify, maybe?
No, not unless, not unless it senses when there's a COVID virus coming into the building. Public health precautions, printing, laminating, installing signs, computer hardware or software, if you had to buy a laptop for employees so that they could work from home, technology upgrade, any air purification, sanitation, an example, be cleaning, disinfection, increased cleaning services, increased trash removal, and so on. Sneeze shields, maintenance and repair of outdoor spaces. Employees re-tasked to local emergency operations center, like, we have an open car, local emergency operations center for COVID, so that wouldn't apply. Any employee that was assigned to manage volunteer groups, we don't really have that. What I want to get here is, and I, Julie, you should have gotten a copy of this. Did I send it to you?
Yes.
Okay. These are ineligible expenses. Costs or expenses have been or will be covered by, that can be covered by insurance. Costs or expenses which are not for local government buildings or properties. Funds may not be used to fill shortfalls in government revenue, payroll or benefits, workforce bonus. workforce bonus, bonuses, severance pay. Election expenses are not allowed as well. So anyway, I just wanted to keep you aware of that and Julie, uh, I can work with you to, um, to get this going.
This is Julie. Okay, I don't think we're going to be at the $3,000 limit, so we should probably move forward with this.
Okay, so, um.
This is Frank with a question?
Do you want me to go ahead and, I'll, I'll fill, start the application?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and start the application and, um, put it in. I'll do that, uh, the next couple of days, so we'll, we'll have it in there. And then, um, we should get all of those expenses reimbursed.
This is Frank with a question?
What's that Frank?
Uh, the planning commission just brought up the idea of having, continuing with the Zoom availability for the public. There might be, like, they didn't discuss this, but hypothetically, you could have people who still have autoimmune, uh, situation they're concerned about and wouldn't want to attend a meeting when you go back to regular meetings. And that you would, that maybe some equipment, audio, video, computer or a big screen system could be put in so that you could run in-person meetings and Zoom at the same time. Like if somebody was a board member of the select board, for example, couldn't make a meeting, they could still zoom in and attend a meeting and have some equipment set up to do that. And I don't know what kind of equipment you would need, but that probably.
That's not really a direct result for this grant.
Yeah, that wouldn't be eligible, Frank.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Krista, Krista, how do I give you back the, um, the host?
Hey Frank, can you mute yourself, please, just for the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the process of doing that now.
Thank you. Um, you go, this is Bob, you go to the three buttons above my screen.
Speaker view?
You click the three, like neck, if you hover your mouse above my box, um, next to mute.
Oh, yeah, yeah, gotcha.
And then you click make host.
Okay. Okay, you're the host.
Thank you.
Ooh, I had such power there for a few minutes.
Zoom boy, you.
You have the whole world in your hands there when you.
The, the expenses that incurred from the sewer, from the, the sanitary wipes getting flushed would be part of this, this grant reimbursement, right Bob?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I, I'd asked that question, uh, early on. Uh, I'll ask it again because when I asked it, I was talking about, I'd asked about the public assistance, um, but I don't think, um, I don't think that would be, um, reimbursable, but, but I'll ask that question. How much was it, Julie?
So if, if the insurance doesn't cover us and then it would be reimbursable through the FEMA grant, then we would be at our number. But my understanding is that the insurance is that it wasn't going to be reimbursable under FEMA. The wastewater emergency was 29, 8350.
29,000 or 2,900?
2,900.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fairly certain that it's, it's not eligible for either grant, um, especially if we have insurance that covers it.
All right. So then Julie, you and Bob will work together on this and get this squared away then, huh?
Yep.
Excellent. Anything else, Bob?
No, that's it, uh, that was it.
Great, does anybody have any other questions for Bob? I guess not. Well, thank you very much for doing all that work, Bob, getting that all prepared for us.
No problem.
Okay, Julie, uh, excuse me, Kristin, do we have any announcements?
This is Kristin, just one announcement. Um, there was somebody from the Census Bureau that reached out to Deb about the Town of Polat Census responses, which are trailing quite a bit further behind than the rest of the state. Um, they had inquired about having some sort of a census representative set up somewhere on town property to try to just be present for people that are passing by. And, uh, they ended up connecting instead with Max Market. And so I just wanted to announce that for those individuals in town who have not yet created, uh, completed their census, just be on the lookout for a representative from the Census Bureau who will be at Max Market so that you can count yourself in our state statistics.
Thank you.
This is Julie. I think it's important to note for the public, it's not just for our statistics. It pertains to funding that we get in our community. So it's really, really, really important that everyone be counted because if not enough people are counted, it's going to drastically slash the funding that we get from the federal government.
Okay, thank you. Is there any zoning administrators report, Kristin?
Yes, there is. Um, so this is Kristin on behalf of Jonas Rosenthal, our interim zoning administrator. Four new permits issued within the last two weeks. One is for a porch extension, one is for a new house and he could not recall the other two. The list was not in front of him when he was writing the message. Uh, researching zoning ordinances from several other communities regarding definitions. Need to scan proposed new language for the conditional use section of our current zoning ordinance. That is all I have. Um, and he also mentioned that he provided information, uh, to several folks in town regarding that grant for COVID-19 expenditures under the CARES Act. And he is unable to attend tonight due to a planning commission meeting in Castleton. And that is all from Jonas.
Thank you. Planning Commission report, anything from anyone on the board there other than the Zoom meeting failed last night because they couldn't get it to launch? Did everyone know that or not?
This is Kristin again. I had, uh, connected with Tom. There was a East Coast Zoom outage last night. It was a mass reporting of that, so I believe that was the source of the issue with the inability to connect.
Okay. Road Formans report. Did I see that Keith joined the meeting?
Excuse me, second.
Okay, yes, Ed.
Um, didn't we have a resignation from the planning commission?
Oh yeah, that should probably be brought up right now, shouldn't it?
Thank him for, anyhow. Accept that with regrets.
Right, we need to officially accept that. Can you just read that, Kristin? Harry's resignation?
Um, sure, hang on once, I have to pull it up. I'm having a hard time finding that email. Did any, did you guys not get it or?
No, I was just going to read it to the public, so it's fine.
Okay, sorry, I don't know where.
So Harry resigned. I, I guess we need to, we need to accept it. I don't, I don't know, it's, it's really no choice of ours. It's just a letter of resignation that we got from Harry. So that leaves another vacant spot in the, in the board. So we need to get that going again.
Um. This is Kristin. So I had reached out, so our other applicant, Jessica Van Ort, who was in the vacancy, had reached out to me, um, during the last meeting that she was attending, indicating that she was interested in still being a commissioner and a part of the board, which I think is wonderful. Um, and she was curious about the clerk position, but was wondering about the hours requirement and was wondering whether or not she would be able to be considered as a commissioner should she pursue the clerk position. And I had reached out to Harry regarding what his idea of those hours requirements were and I did not hear anything back, but I did tell Tom Collard, um, that she was still interested and he said that that was great information to know. So I guess I'm just not completely sure if, you know, what, what the board would like marching orders to be for everybody.
It, it would be my opinion that we would need to advertise for another position and then give, and they could, uh, discuss it and recommend somebody at the plan, at the next planning commission meeting, like, like they've done before.
Okay.
And, and go the same route that we did the last, the last couple of times. So if we could advertise it for a couple of weeks or something that anyone interested, please send in a letter of intention to us.
Okay, would you like me to contact Elizabeth, um, regarding getting that?
Yes, yes, please. Is that what everybody else is kind of thinking too? We just go through the process again like we have for all the other applicants? Okay.
Did we, this Ed again, did we thank Harry for his service on the board and?
We, we haven't officially thanked him, but we'll mark that down right now, Ed. Ed and, and I and everybody else, whoever's. We, we appreciated it and, and, uh, I.
He will be.
Do the rest of the board feel that way?
Absolutely.
This is John, I think it's very appropriate. I think he was on the planning commission 10 years and I don't know how many years as chair.
Okay.
This is Julie, I have a question.
Go ahead, Julie.
Did you advertise twice for the two positions that you filled?
I believe so.
Two vacant positions were advertised, as far as I know.
There were two separate ads run in local papers.
I believe so. That we had, we had, uh, we put it, we ran it again before they made their decision on the second member. But that's, that's what we need to do. We need to run, run it through the cycle again. We can't just pick from the, the pool that we have at this point, I feel. So what's the rest of the board feel about that?
John agrees.
You guys, the rest of you guys all agree that we should run it through the cycle like we have the established cycle of advertisement, then the planning commission chooses a candidate and then we get to decide?
Mike, this is Bob. Um, yes, I agree. We need to start over and, and advertise it. And I also definitely appreciate everything Harry did for us.
Okay. So it could be noted in the record, uh, the minutes, please, Kristin, our appreciation to Harry. Thank you.
Could, could Kristin, uh, make up a letter thanking him? I think, uh, the town clerk did, uh, send an email, um, to him, but not very.
That would be nice. Could you, could you write him a, a thank you from the, officially from the, the town select board, please, Kristin?
So I wrote, this is Kristin, I wrote him a message as well following his email, but I can certainly draft something up if you, or alternatively, you all could write him via your emails.
It sounds like.
John, if you're suggesting like an actual USPS mailed letter, is that what you prefer?
Yes.
Like, like an official document from the, the board of select?
I will send you. Yep, I'll send you the, the board of select. Um, I will send you all that letter.
Help myself.
I like, it sounds very official. Um, but I'll, I'll send you all something and you put your two cents in. But yes, I'll help you work on that.
Okay, thank you very much. So onto the road formans.
Um, let's see, I think, is that Keith's number, is he here?
Keith, did you join us?
He is muted, Keith. Is there a way, a button that you need to press to unmute yourself?
Or is that not Keith?
How's that?
That's better, good.
Okay, okay. He came on and scolded me, told me I had to press star six to come unmuted, so. Um, yeah, we pretty much been on Bets Bridge Road since we last talked. Um, the rock is all down and we're, we at least have a gravel path over the rock. We've got quite a bit more gravel to spread, but there's at least passage there. So that's really where we devoted our time to and we will be, oh, well, it'll be at least the rest of this week probably before we have our, our base coat of gravel down. So, and, uh, um, the only other thing I have, I contacted Craig, called him and talked to him and asked for a response through the email and I didn't down on me till after I was done work today that I hadn't heard from him. So I don't have any information on that backhoe, uh, invoice that we received on that. So I'll need to follow up on that. Um, and the only other thing I would like to discuss, what are we going to, what are thoughts on winter sand this year? Um, thoughts being, are we going to bid it again or are we going to buy it from, we had a quality product at a fair price last year. Um, the price hasn't gone up, should we just get it there again? Or I just want your guys' thoughts on it, that's all.
How, how much do we, do you think we're going to need this year going into it?
I'm thinking 1,500 yards, Mike.
Okay.
Actually, we have found that using a better product, we can cut our usage some. Um, we still do have some at the pit that we processed two or three years ago that I think we can add to the West Polat pile and mix some Wallingford stone with it. And that will, um, that will get us through on the west side. And so we basically need to replenish our pile on the Polat side. And, um, we used to target 100 loads over there, which would be 1,400 yards, but we do have a little bit of reserve there and, um, you know, I'm, I just thinking we want to, it's into August, headed for September and, you know, everybody's making it and thinking about it now. We want to make sure we get in line and not end up late like we did last year, so.
We bought it from Stanley and what's his price this year? I mean, I don't remember what it was last year.
Uh, we bought it from Stanley last year at $10 a yard and that's what he'll make it for us this year if we choose, so.
Okay. And.
And I'm thinking it'll probably be the same. Well, the other option would be chat, who was, um, last year was slightly cheaper, but we decided we would go, Stanley is making a nice coarse product for us over there that really, you know, it really fits the bill. We don't have to add any rock to it or anything. It's, I think I got a lot of comments on it last winter. Uh, well, Harry was one of them that commented that he, he liked it on Rupert Mountain. And, uh, I mean, I, I think that's the way to go. If we can use a little better project, product for a dollar more a yard and save a few yards doing it, our net result's probably going to be the same. And if we're only going to bid the two local contractors again, I don't think you're going to see a lot of difference from what we saw last year, so.
Okay. So how much, so how much stone will we have to get for West Polat? So, how much, how much stone will we have to get for West Pollet?
Oh, I don't know. We basically drew that last year as needed, Mike. You know, we tried to concentrate on ice storms and things like that, where we wanted some extra grit on the road. I think we, we may have used 300 ton last year, and some of that was on the Pollet side that we purchased prior to picking up Stanley's sand. So, there's actually still some on the face of the pile in Pollet, that is the three-quarter Wallingford stone, so.
And so that would be the, for the West Pollet side, we'd need 300 ton?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a ballpark figure, yes.
Right.
So. Yeah, and like I said, it may not be that much, because we didn't, we didn't incorporate it into the pile. That was something that we could do through the winter months. When you had a good day and the traveling was good, you could, you know, whip a few loads in from Wallingford, and they were there waiting when you wanted them, and then when we got them used up or got close, we got a few more, and, you know, and so, you know, it's variable depending on the winter, and, but that's a ballpark figure.
Okay, what do we got for comments from our board as far as the products that we'd like to see?
This is Chuck. I guess I would say Martel.
Okay.
This is Ed, that would be my, I would go with Martel again.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments on that? Is that a motion in a second to stay with Stanley Martel?
Okay, my name.
Okay. Motion in second from, motion from Chuck in second by Ed to stay with Stanley Martel with the winter sand for approximately 1,500 yards. All those in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Thank you.
Mike?
Okay, and I want to add, just because the discussion was out there, that I was approached by Hunter Excavating to provide our winter sand too, but they're really the same money and further away, so we're either going to have to pay them to truck it or travel further there to pit their processing, and is up behind Carreras towards Shrewsbury, so it's not really, it's too far to go, so. It's Nick Baker is handling it, and he approached me, and like, it's going to be the same money and a lot more trucking, so it just doesn't fit the program. Just so you guys are aware of that, that they did, they did approach us, and I had a discussion with him, so.
Okay, good. I'm glad we keep an open line, but definitely, we're getting the product that we're very happy with, and it's the most convenient for us to save money on trucking, so.
Well, absolutely, that's, that's, I mean, it's a quality product right close that, and somebody we can work with, and we'll get on, get in the list and get in line over there and get it hauled when he makes it, and now we're, we're ahead of the game. One more, one more thing, the Dodge truck from last weekend, last meeting, we can take delivery of that anytime, but somebody would have to go. Is Bob endorsed to sign that? And Julie, I just forwarded you the email that he sent me today that was in the, has the figure on it and everything, which is, just as we discussed, it's actually slightly, slightly cheaper because he registered it for us, and he charged us for a regular registration instead of the municipal one. So, the figure is in the email that I forwarded you at four o'clock today, so you may not have seen it yet. But Bob signed the paperwork on, after the last meeting, and then when Bob and I were in discussion with the salesman, he said he was on vacation last week and didn't want to do it till this week, so that's why he's just, just getting back to us now, so. But that is ready to go. I don't know what you guys need to do for a motion, or a warrant, or what, but we can take care of that anytime you guys are ready.
Now, we made a motion and passed it last week, last meeting, to buy the truck, so I think that covers it.
Well, that's kind of what I thought, but I just, like you said, I wanted everybody aware. I'm assuming maybe Bob and I need to go to Rutland to pick it up, or maybe I can talk him into delivering it and meeting at Hewlett's or something, and I'll work that out with Bob, as long as everybody else is on board.
No, that makes perfect sense.
I'm assuming he's endorsed to sign, is what I'm saying. Bob Jones, okay, all right.
Did we make, did we make that clear in the motion, or should we do that right now? We did make it clear in the motion of last week that Bob was, Kristen?
This is Kristen. At the beginning of the COVID-19 state of emergency, the board made a motion to allow Bob Jones to be the designated signer on behalf of the board.
Okay.
Still stands, as that is still our current state.
Perfect, thank you.
I need a warrant before I can write a check.
What's that, Julie?
I need a warrant before I can write a check. You guys could just approve the warrant for, hold on, 49669 to, who is it to, Keith?
It's to Rutland Auto Group.
Rutland Auto Group, and then I will make that tomorrow.
Okay, somebody else?
Keith, have you contacted Woodard for the dump body as well as the plow? That's going to have to be ordered.
Yes, I know. I've talked with him, yes, and I have not got a confirmed price, because we've been having a discussion back and forth here, and it was kind of hard last week because I was riding on a bulldozer all day, so I didn't make a lot of communication, so. It was, yeah, but we've had that discussion, Chuck, and I don't know about scheduling or where it fits in yet, but, and I haven't got a firm price, because I went with some options here, like a drop-down site on the dump box and things that's really beneficial to us when we're, well, it's not so bad anymore, but I know I would have given anything for a good flatbed when we were doing all the culverts and stuff and lugging tampers and pumps and everything else, trying to get them in and out of the, you know, a high trot, so. So, yeah, so I haven't got a confirmed price of them from him, and I'll let you guys know as quick as I get things nailed down. And I have confirmed that it is possible to convert our Tarko Salt and Pepper sander to electric, so that probably won't be through him, but the rest of the equipment will be.
Why would it not be through Woody?
Why would it not be through him? Because he's not a dealer for them.
How far are you going to have to go to get a dealer?
Ah, down towards Albany, probably.
Is the Tarko isn't that Fort Miller? Don't they, don't they do that, too, Keith?
They made, that's exactly who it is. It's Fab 3.
Salt and Pepper, right?
That's right, Fab 3, right at the Fort Miller in Greenwich, but, all I've got from them so far, Mike, is that they, we can't deal directly with them like we used to. We can get parts and stuff like that from them, but, you know, they want you to go through a dealer now rather than dealing directly with them, so.
Okay. But they'll still sell parts, that's all I knew, we get parts from them too.
That's correct, yes. Yeah, and parts are readily available. They have altered that sander very little since we bought that one in 99, so.
Are you still looking at a stainless steel box?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got prices coming both ways, Mike, but I'm still, that's what I'm thinking, unless it's cost prohibitive, so.
And I think it's a good idea. But one, Gary's truck's eight years old already, and it looks really good still, you know? You would have had to paint a steel box twice.
Well, no, they hold up well. Polkneys is on its second truck up there, they, you know, they put the stainless steel body off the old truck onto the next one, so that one is, that one's probably eight to 10 years old also, and it's still very good, you know, unless you beat them up or DM them or something, they, they hold up very well, so.
Yeah, I think it's a wise choice.
I think it's, I think it's the way to go, yeah, especially in the environment that that operates in, it's, you know, I think it's the way to go.
Right.
This is John, do we?
We haven't talked, are we going to advertise that Dodge?
Yeah, I think we have to wait, Chuck, until we got a timeline on the new one, but yeah, then we should definitely advertise it, and I, I have some interested parties already that are, want to know when and what you're going to do, so, there's some interest in it out there.
I would recommend that we take bids. Also, Keith, I have some more information in regards to the rest of the board also. A 2005 year New Holland model, TS, Tom Sam, 115 Apple, four-by-four tractor, 1,480 hours, it's 115 horsepower, has a 24-by-24 power shuttle transmission with creeper. So in other words, that's 24 speeds forward, 24 speeds reverse, has a Alamo flail head with, that'll handle grass and light brush, and tentatively, depending upon what the freight charge is going to be to get it, 82,500, now that may vary, maybe less. But a tractor with 1,480 hours. So, just wanted you to know, because you all realize this is the last hurrah for Dave Hosley with us. That's the end of my information.
Uh, that, Chuck, is that, is that mower on a boom, or is it on a, how is it mounted?
It's a boom, boom mower with a flail head.
Yeah, that, that might be something we should give consideration for sure. No, and I think you're right, Dave is less and less. He's actually going to, just FYI, he's going to start mowing again here sometime in the end of the first week of September, so he'll be going back around the blacktop and doing what he usually does for his fall mowing, so. And then, once again, no guarantees on next year, but he told us that last year too, so.
John, you had a question?
I'm pretty sure that he's not, he's not going to be mowing next year.
John, you had a question earlier?
Yeah, he's, I got one comment, that Hosley's redoing Rupert Mountain for Rupert yesterday. And also, I wonder, do we get the, the new truck lettered somewhere, the door lettered?
I've been using Bruce or Jane.
Okay.
And he makes, he has that, that's on all of the equipment, it's on the grader, the backhoe, and all the trucks. He has that pattern with our logo on it, and he makes it out of vinyl, and to my knowledge, he has yet to charge us for anything he's done, so. I think he charged us to make the pattern the first time, when, which I don't even remember, I think that was the 2013 Mack truck maybe, and then he's done, done everything since then, so.
Okay, good.
And, so he's right local and comes right to the garage and does it, you just have to call him, so.
Excellent.
All right, so as far as the tractor goes, I mean, I'm, I'm very interested in that too, but I don't know that, that our, our checkbook is, so we got to think about that a little harder. But I'm glad you, I'm glad you've been keeping an eye out for us, Chuck. Anybody else have anything for Keith?
This is, oh, sorry.
Kristen?
Oh, well, I was just going to say, speaking of checkbooks, there was the idea put out there that you could all make a motion to approve a warrant for the price of the truck that Julie could write a check for, so that...
Oh, God, yeah. Good, thank you. Does somebody want to approve that warrant?
I just want to confirm, so the motion on the table would be, the motion would be made to approve a warrant for 49669 to the Rutland Auto Group for the Dodge truck for the Highway Department.
Okay, who wants to make that motion?
I would make, this is Ed, I'll make that motion.
Ed will make it. Do I have a second on that motion? Bob, you want a second on that, don't you?
Oh, yeah, I'll second it. I usually just stay out of it, because I'm the one signing the check, so.
That's all right. All right, we got a motion made and seconded in favor of the warrant for, for the new truck. Chuck? Oh, go ahead, Kristen.
Just real quick, and then the discussion around this was that Bob Jones has, remains the designated signer for the board and has approved to sign the check, and this is in the effort to have the truck take delivery before our next meeting.
Okay. All right, Chuck? Or Ed, you have something?
This is Ed, I just have a quick question. Am I the second signer to Bob if Bob's not available?
I believe so. Didn't we pick two?
I, I thought we did, anyhow.
I'm pretty sure you are.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and seconded. Chuck?
Well, you remember, I voted no to purchase the Dodge, so it's a matter of if you want me to approve this. I mean, it's got to be paid, so I guess I'll make the motion that we pay it.
No, we're just voting on it. Ed made the motion. Are you in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Ed?
Uh, yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved for the warrant to just sign for the new truck.
And Julie, that's the correct amount, correct?
That's what the email that Keith sent me had.
Okay. And then my one last question is for the motion about Stanley Martel for winter sand. Mike, in your motion, or in the motion, you had indicated that it was for approximately 1,500 tons, is that correct?
Yards.
Yards, thank you. Tons felt like a lot. Okay.
Probably should, probably should include the price too, Kristen, at $10 a yard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Keith?
Uh, yes, this is Ed.
Okay, Ed?
Did Dave Hosley have a comment about a culvert by his house? Was there a problem there with water?
Oh, yeah, that, that, I, I even forgot all about that. David sent me, Dave Hosley in West Pollet.
I got your...
Sent me some interesting videos.
I got your pictures, you sent me.
Yeah. It looks like we got a lot of water coming down New Street too, huh?
There always is. What it did, it just washed down, coated over the grate on the manhole right by his driveway, so. I was, I went over there today, it looks like he had cleaned it off. Looks like he had cleaned it off. I mean, I think it was lawn clippings and leaves and gravel from that old underdrain there where, and I think it just pushed down on top of the grate and coated it over so that it, it was taking water. But I don't think it was taking it good. And I went over today at the end of the day, just because I wanted to, I was hoping it was gonna rain today and I could run right down while it was raining and try to see what was going on. But it never rained hard enough so that it, I bothered. But I ran down there just before four o'clock today and, um, somebody had at least cleaned the, cleaned the top of the grate off and it doesn't, there's no obstruction in there or anything. So it was, uh, a lot of water, yes. It, uh, actually comes out, a lot of it comes out. All the little, uh, church street there, you know, Spruce Street, by the church. Runs out that, runs into wheel tracks and then dumps down through all the way from up where Walt Kurjak used to live and comes down through there considerable. Runs right down the sidewalk in front of, uh, oh, Tim and Lori Joseph's old house, whoever's there now, and then dumps right down onto Dave. And then, uh, you know, where he tore down Barbara Harrington's house and he's kinda bumped it out closer to the edge of the road with what he did there. And, you know, that was a pretty good stream. But in that flash flood type situation, you're, you're gonna get a lot of water anyway. You know, that, that was a pretty substantial rain we got the other night and it came in a hurry. So it, it wouldn't be uncommon for storm drains not to, to be over, over, you know. But I, I think it's all set now, but I'll monitor it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thanks, Ed, I forgot about that. Anything else for Keith? I do wanna say I came over to Switch Road about a month ago or so and I was very happy with the way that road turned out, Keith. It looks really nice.
I know, it, it is nice. Um, it's still gonna get galusha stone on top. That's just the base of gravel there now. It's, you know, it's not a gradable surface really yet without getting back down into the rubble. But, um, that's what we'll be doing going forward is concentrating on getting that covered up as well as what we did up on Bets Bridge. We, we had pretty good, pretty good luck with our ledge up there and we got, got a lot of it. I would've liked to get a little more, but we had to draw a line somewhere. So we hauled a little more stone and filled up against it in some places there and we got some ditch lines. Um, we're still retaining water in one spot, which I don't really like, but we can't really add a covert there without some cooperation from Tim Waite or, you know, or young Francis Waite. One or the other, one owns the meadow across the road. So we put in what was existing culverts and, and hopefully it will, with the road being raised up, it'll take care of it. But, uh, we'll have to kinda watch that one spot right there too, so.
Okay.
Mike?
Good, thanks. Yes, Chuck?
Uh, I see Ken Norman is in attendance. Uh, does he wanna speak on this highway or what?
Yeah, sure. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
No, um, the road, the Switch Road is great. Um, I'm glad Keith mentioned about topping it 'cause it's pretty rough right now coming up from just above, um, well, just where I come off, come off of Andrews Lane onto just below my driveway. Um, I know the garbage truck left my driveway today and he sunk in pretty good just going out of my driveway, but that's, that's a lot of weight. Um, it's pretty nice. It's washed a couple places like up around Leon's Land. It's, it's washing the edge back from that torrential rain we had, but it's pretty nice.
Good. I'm glad, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Keith? Okay, is there anything from the assessors, Kristen?
This is Kristen, nothing submitted to me from the assessor's office. Um, there, except for there was an email that I forwarded to you all from Karen regarding her concerns with the town hall building.
Right, oh, the, the roof. And that's, that's in process, right, John?
Yes, what, uh, the last, we had talked with, or Sue actually talked with, uh, Jeff Kelly and he was, uh, dealing with trying to get Gibby Mack's lift, um, that Gibby rents out. And it was on another job and he didn't know the timetable at that time.
Okay.
But there, Karen is concerned, uh, as she should be. And, uh, there was water from this last storm on, on the floor of the middle room. So, uh, there's something needs to be fixed, but that's way up there. That's up high and, uh, so it'll need, uh, need special equipment.
Okay. Well, we're working on it, so that's very positive. Thank you. And town clerk's memo?
No report from the town clerk's office.
Okay, town treasurer's memo?
Hi, this is Julie. Um, I just have the, I just have the two warrants. Um, and then I've had some wastewater fees coming in and I had one person specifically request a letter explaining the increase in wastewater rates.
Okay.
That was about all I had.
Yeah, I saw that you'd said that, but, I mean, and, and they were questioning whether the rate would continue to increase, but it, and it certainly, from all indications, looks like it, it will to, uh, to match the user rate against the cost it takes to operate. I know that's not what they wanna hear, but if we can, I mean, our only option would be to try and determine if we want to solicit funds from the general fund or, or have a line item to help reduce the rates. Do you have any other ideas, Julie? Not really, huh?
No. But, um, but I do think that people, I think that people want information and I, I know that this is public, but I think that people deserve information. So I think that if we could get a letter written, um, so that I have something to give people when they ask.
Okay, do you, uh, I guess we could send some ideas back and forth, you and me, and maybe Kristen would wanna help out with that too? Possibly?
Yeah, this is Kristen. I know that there was, we sent out a letter last year explaining the initial rates. And that, you know, spoke to the basically, that spoke to basically, Mike, what you just said about how the fee is a direct, or against what it costs to operate.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to reach out to you tomorrow. Tomorrow, Julie, and, or if you think of it first, send me a, a nudge, I guess.
This is Frank on this topic.
Yes, Frank.
Uh, I had an inquiry today from someone who was wondering what percentage that the users in the district pay and the percentage that the town also pays to meet the total. And, uh, I didn't know what that information was, so I couldn't say anything. So if you do send a letter, you may wanna get into how the costs are compensated across the town with the town globally and then the users, how much they're paying a percentage of that.
Okay. I believe that the town pays for half of the upgraded costs, right, Julie? And then the, the operations are off rented by the users along with half of the upgrade.
Right.
Right? Okay. So warrants. Somebody wanna make a motion on the warrants?
I'll make a motion on the warrants, this is Chuck.
Okay, Chuck, does somebody wanna second that motion? To pay the warrants?
Wanna second it, John?
I'll second it.
Okay. You, you gotta, all you gotta do is nod and I'll, I'll throw you right under the bus, no problem. So, um, motion made and seconded, uh, by Chuck and John to pay the warrants. Any more discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Maybe.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion's approved. And you had?
I also don't have anything, I don't know, the Nortrak's bill was not on there. I haven't received another invoice and I didn't know what the status on that was.
Right, Keith had mentioned in his conversations that he's back and forth with Craig at Nortrak's and he hasn't got, he hasn't got any emails explaining about how we're, how they come up with that, that price with two jobs and et cetera, et cetera. So he's still negotiating with Nortrak's. We'll keep you in the loop.
Julie, didn't you send us, this is Chuck, didn't you send us, uh, the email you got from Nortrak's?
I did. There, there's one invoice that I received that's still outstanding. I haven't received another one. I didn't know if that one invoice was for the two repairs. It's not clear on that at all and I don't know.
That was the $500 one?
No, it was like $4,900 or something.
Okay, yeah.
Right, so Keith will, Keith will get back to you as soon as he has clarification from Nortrak's that we arrived at a something.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for the treasurer? Guess not. Thank you, Julie. Uh, emergency manager and health officer done wastewater. Uh, I don't know that they've done any of the power jetting yet. I haven't heard anything about that. But they, I know they, they did pump just recently and they plan on doing the jetting soon, so. That's about all.
And this is Kristen. I also submitted the draft RFQ for the feasibility project for the sledge storage along to Jenny and Tom Brown and Jill. And so, um, Tom was just curious about who, where we would be advertising it and would that be correct, that it would be the Lakes Region Free Press? Like where we always?
I think the last time that we, that we did that, when we did the sewer project, they wanted it to be far more reaching than that. So I think we probably need to, to do a little bit more than that, but I don't remember, I don't remember where we advertise at, the upgrade project. Um, I guess we can look into it. Maybe, maybe Tom even has suggestions because nowadays without papers, it's not like you can throw it in the Rutland Herald and a million people see it. I guess.
I can ask him.
I guess they still do electronically, but.
Um, okay, I can ask him for suggestions. I know that, I would assume that it would, that's our...
Ask you, Chuck.
Yeah, that's our, go, you know, our designated paper that we work with for everything and the plan, but. I'll ask him if he has any recommendations and I will report back to you guys.
Okay. Thank you. Older unfinished business?
Um, I do have a couple of things. This is Kristen again. Um, so I, I emailed you guys all the job description for Elizabeth's position and I just made sure that you, that looked okay to all of you.
Looked good, thank you.
Okay, so that will get up. Um, the last, the other thing was, so following our last meeting, I just in person, kind of in my, here and there, a couple of people that I know from West Pollitt also reached out to me and said they saw in the minutes the speed concerns through West Pollitt and wanted to just add that they all agree. So there have been a large number of, or a good handful of folks who have seconded and so forth the fact that speed is a concern. Um, I did just wanna follow up with that for the minutes and everything too, to say that I did reach out to Dave Ricard to let him know that this is a concern and it was discussed at the meeting. And he said thank you and that, Mike, he was hoping to maybe follow up with you in person sometime. Additionally, I also sent an email to Devon Neary as well as Sarah Young, so representatives from the Regional Planning Commission in Rutland, as well as Sarah for the Transportation Advisory Group for the Town of Pollitt, asking them if West Pollitt could be added to the speed study. And they said they weren't sure if it, they could go to that wide of a, um, an area, but they would certainly look into it. So just wanted to share an update on that.
And then if, if it couldn't go that wide, it would become a separate project? I think that's what they indicated.
Correct, so it's something that they're still absolutely going to work on and I don't think it requires too much additional discussion right now because there's not a lot more information. But it is something that's on their radar and they are planning to look around.
Oh, okay, thank you.
This is, this is Frank about, about that.
Go ahead, Frank.
I, uh, I was, uh, coming down the hill from the old school and I always slowed down by the monument coming towards it. And I had somebody this week, um, shoot right up from the New York Porter side of where the old store was, shoot right across in front of me. And I said, geez, isn't there a yield sign in there? And I looked and there's no yield sign or any traffic control. It governs that intersection in that area. And then today, when I was at the post office, I saw a, a truck with a trailer go shooting up through from the old store or railroad side, up through, and another truck had stopped, but the truck that stopped had to ride away through there, but there's no traffic control, no yield sign. I just wanna mention that because it's, you know, it could be a, it's something, if we don't have a yield.
I'll let it come out with this, with this, when they do this study on it and they'll, they'll review the, some of the information that the state had done on it several years ago and we're gonna have to make some decisions and, and about some changes in the village there in order to correct any of that for certain. Thank you. Okay, is anything else under older unfinished business anybody has?
Yeah, this is Ed, um, regarding the speeding issues. Doesn't Dave have a radar unit?
I believe so.
Maybe it's time he was asked to set it up and start using it.
Okay, I haven't heard anything from him, but it would be a good thing.
What is that gonna do about yielding?
Yield.
I would think, shouldn't those signs be replaced if there were signs there and there's nothing there regarding the yield and?
The problem with it is, with that monument right in the center of town, it makes it so confusing. It's, it's hard to, uh, it's hard to say what's supposed to be there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I, can I interject here, Mike?
Please do, Keith.
There's, there's no way to sign that intersection to code because the signs would have to be around the monument. Because you can put one on the right-hand side towards the post office that's a yield sign, but that doesn't cover the left-hand turn up the hill, okay? And you really, it's like almost five corners instead of four there, the way everything comes together. And there's, there's no possible way that you can sign that intersection to code. And that is part of the problem. I don't think there ever was a sign there. There may have been a yield sign by the rail trail there at one time or another, but it has not been for years because it, it doesn't cover what you're, what you're supposed to be doing. You have a secondary, what's supposed to be a secondary village street accessing a main through fare, which is Vermont State 153. So that, that's where all the complications lie. Even the state engineers, when they were there, said there's really no way you can put signs up here that are going to address the issue. And that's, there's one there that was put up years ago that says yield left oncoming traffic or something when you come from by the firehouse. But that one just makes it more confusing and, and most everybody I've talked to's opinion. Um, and I think the other factor is that we... And I think the other factor is that we're getting more and more traffic. It's not just the local people in West Pollitt Village that are going through there now. We're getting an influx of out-of-town traffic there, and it complicates things. So a traffic study there definitely would be advisable.
Yeah, we hope this grant will get the ball rolling on that, so we should be in good shape. Thank you for that, Keith.
I do have one more thing. I guess it would fall under old business. And you're not going to be too happy to hear it, because I assume that there was going to be a lot of other people that were going to take this project over and run with it. And as of date, there's not been a thing done with the library steps. Are we going to wait until an accident there, or is something going to be done at some point?
Okay. That's a good point. I guess we have to revisit that.
I mean, it's been months. I mean, all kinds of, a number of people were going to jump right onto that and get things right done. And to date, there's been nothing mentioned about it at all.
Right, anything, at least for the primary stairs for the library, let alone this.
Exactly.
Handicap access, okay.
I've been waiting for someone to say it, but finally I said, okay, I'm going to mention. I'm going to mention it.
Kristen, could you put a, reach out to the librarian, Mary Lou, and ask if she could talk to the board and see if if we could address at least that one particular issue, if they had some comments, or if we could start the conversation again to get that corrected before they go any farther and deteriorate anymore?
Sure.
It's unfortunate, the time to have done it is, you know, when the things were shut down, but anyhow.
I agree.
Hard, because everything was just so frozen up for a while, and I think everybody was, you know, but I.
Well, there was any number of people that were going to jump right on there.
I will reach out to Mary Lou and include you all on that email correspondence.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I'll bring up the tractor again. That particular tractor that I brought up is quite a distance away from New York State, so I'm sure that dealer has other customers that probably will be looking at such. So I just want you all to realize that it isn't going to be available forever.
Right. And I know it's one of those things you need to strike when the iron's hot, but we just spent that money on the dump truck, so I don't know where the money comes from. Okay, thank you. No business?
Julie's got her hand up.
Oh, Julie's got her hand up. Go ahead, Julie.
I just want to point out, I don't believe that there was more than one ad for the planning commission position. I only paid for one ad. I haven't seen anything else come through that there was a second ad. And I find it ridiculous that you have a qualified, competent woman that has been asking to be on that commission for three vacancies now, and I see no reason that she can't be on it. And I find it kind of suspicious that you have a woman out of three people. You had one woman, and she can't seem to get a spot.
Point made.
Thank you.
Anything else under new business? Public comment? John, you've, John Sabata, you've just joined us for the whole meeting. You're newly appointed. Thank you for joining us with the meeting. Do you have any public comment to make?
Do we have to have a little executive session?
John, you should be able to click to unmute yourself. There you go. Oh, sorry, we still can't hear you.
Now we can't hear anything you're saying, unfortunately.
Well, it was good to see you present with us, John.
Thank you.
This is Kristen. Before we adjourn, I would like to remind everybody that we will have to discuss the employee, personal employee matters in executive session.
Okay. So is there any other public comment to be made? Frank, go ahead.
Okay, quickly. If Hosley's going out of the business, then is he going to, what's he doing with his equipment? Number one. Number two is with commercial liability insurance policies, typically you have to schedule on properties. And so we, legacy towns insurance, you may want to make sure that the old store property you took over is scheduled on to the on to the insurance if it needs to be. And if you're talking about possessing a piece of property that you turn to a landlord, the insurance question on that'd also be answered on that. And along with talking with the lawyer on the repossession, number three, other than just the insurance and the status of landlord status, is if at one point in time the town was, the state was looking at setting up a garage and piling stone or stuff near button up bend, and instead of selling them the property, Mike, when you're asking the lawyer about the issues we discussed before about landlord, would it be possible that the town can be a landlord and lease out a piece of that property to the state with an annual income? Because the state, instead of buying it for a certain amount, could pay easily in their budget a lease payment at less money over time. And then you could define a portion of that property instead of subdividing it, which may run into problems. You might be able to lease off a piece that the state would need, and the town could also use another part of that at the same time.
The state hasn't showed any interest in that property in a couple of years, so. There was discussions, and the ball was in their court, and they showed no interest, so. That's pretty much a moot point. But thank you for your comments about the insurance regarding those other two things, Frank.
Mike?
Yes.
I don't know if it's just my iPad or if it's other people's, but he's breaking up terribly. I could only hear about half of what he said.
Yeah, same here. He's got to get some better equipment or something.
Okay. Ken Norman?
Hey, I missed the part on high-speed internet, but are you saying you're leaving West Pollitt out of the study?
On high-speed internet?
And this is, this is Kristen. It was speaking about there's going to be a speed study for rate of travel, speed.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
Okay.
Keep your speed down, Ken.
Always.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for public comment? Okay, so Julie, we got to talk about that issue regarding the pension system, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll close this.
Real quick, just because we're in this Zoom meeting, and it's on kind of new territory for executive session. Well, the executive session is to discuss employee relations and employee labor relations agreements, especially specifically pertaining to employee wage and pension. What I'm going to do for everybody who's not a member of the board, I'm going to place you back into the waiting room. And what that means is you will no longer be a part of this meeting for this purpose. And then once the board comes out of executive session, I will add you back in, should you wish to be here for the rest of the meeting. Sound okay to everybody?
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you, Kristen.
Somebody will need to make the motion to enter executive session.
I will make that motion, this is Chuck.
Okay, and John seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, motion made and seconded to go into executive session for employee personnel.
And this executive session is to also include Julie Mack, is that correct?
That's correct.
So you want to do the roll call vote on that?
Oh, yes. John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and place you into the waiting room. Okay, and I'm going to pause the recording.
Showing eight.
And move Frank to the waiting room. Okay, that looks good?
That looks good to me. Does everybody else look all right with that?
I'm going to pause the recording for executive session. Admit and admit.
Okay, who wants to make a motion to exit?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, John made a motion, Chuck seconded the exit executive session. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. So we had a discussion about how we wanted to handle the pension system, and how do we want to. Does somebody want to make a motion on what we discussed as options?
I'll make the motion, this is Chuck. The motion is that an individual making $5,000 or greater and has worked for the town for one year is qualified for that 401.
Is that the right term for the pension system, Julie?
The simple IRA.
Simple IRA, okay. All right, Chuck, does somebody want to second that motion?
Change the 401 to a simple IRA.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion? Kristen, you got a question, or?
My, this is Kristen. My only question is, I believe that's just a different plan than what had originally, no, okay, sorry. I rescind my.
Okay, your question, okay. Do I have a second on this motion that we got on the floor right now?
I'll second it.
Ed will second it, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? John?
I'm going to abstain, since one of the individuals is so.
Okay, thank you. Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
And Bob?
No.
Okay. I'll vote yes, so we'll have a it pass. Okay. Yeah, I'll say it, Kristen?
Good, sorry, yes.
Okay. Ed, you had a comment to make?
Oh, I'm good. I'll make it at some point.
Okay. Is there any other comments? Bob, do you have a comment to make?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Is there anything else that we need to conduct tonight? Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor? John?
Do we have a second? Sorry.
Oh, yeah, Chuck did. That's all I'm nodding. John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Have a good evening.
Night.